I'd like to call this board meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, sir?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Ledge of allegiance, please. Ledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, you volunteered. We're gonna call her now. Welcome, welcome, welcome. And we've already added you to the roll.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. First, we have our recognition of visitors, and it seems like everybody up here has been here pretty consistent, so this is all one big part of the family anymore, but we do always want to welcome our A D C members that join us, and of course, our legal counsel, Ms. Mallory, thank you for being here. We have our first hearing of the public.
Marge Walker, 2955 Lexington. And then, as you know, I have already made comments about the time school starts, and they start at 7:20. Well, now, Richville, next year, they're going to be starting at 8:30. Man, these kids, I don't know what they'll do with all that sleep. Anyways. They must have seen some of the statistics that I have been looking up. And somebody I had talked to, he said that they have to get up at 5:30 in the morning here, Lorraine, to go to school. I think for kids to get up that early in the morning, even for adults, it's absolutely ridiculous. And when you're a teenager, you want to stay up late and play with your electrical gadgets. I hope that Lorraine can get on the bandwagon and start school at 8:30, 9 o'clock, even better.
Thank you. You're slacking, Jay, you're number two this time.
I know.
You gotta be quick, buddy.
She was quick. Good afternoon, I'm Jay Pickering, I'm the president of Lorraine Education Association, represent the teachers here in Lorraine. I'd like to speak a little about the need to evaluate our CEO before the Academic Distress Commission gives him an up or down on his future here in Lorraine. I would like to address the Academic Distress Commission, but we don't know when they're meeting, and it's, it might even be more appropriate for me to address it there. But anyways, to do that, I'd like to describe to you how he has recently treated some of our teachers here. On April 10th, several teachers received a letter indicating they were not going to be renewed for next year. They were called either down to the office, or somebody arrived at their room at the end of the day on April 10th. And they were given this letter that says, "Notification of intention to recommend nonrenewal." They were given no reasons for this recommendation. If they wanted to learn the reasons, they would have to follow the newly created policy by the A D, by the CEO, which, for the first time, we got a chance to see as well. Actually, I've passed this out to the, to the members here, and you can see it was adopted on April 10th, which was the day the teachers received this letter. It says, for those that don't have a copy, "It's a new policy, giving authority and control of the chief executive officer as applied to nonrenewal of limited teacher contracts. It is the intent of this policy to modify and supersede the policies and procedures established by the Board of Education," and it goes on to describe what this is. These teachers were not given any reason. I was not even contacted regarding this, as to who they are. There could be more of them out there, I realize that today, just thinking about it. They may not have contacted me. The evaluation process in Lorraine is not over with until, actually, tomorrow, so these folks have not gone through any evaluation. And you say, "How could this happen?" And I do have to admit that our teacher contract does allow for this to occur. We have a segment in there, a section, which I never talk about, but unfortunately, it's occurred, and everybody knows about it, so I can talk about it. But if a teacher that is within two years of employment here in Lorraine, well, we call them actually probationary employees, they can be nonrenewed without going through the evaluation procedure, or apparently by not even be given a reason. Because at this point, this occurred almost three weeks ago, these teachers have not heard any reason given, have not been given a reason. They have asked for the reason, it has not been given to them. I can share with you that they are special ed teachers, all of them. The supervisor, in two cases, did not even know about it, and I saw this via text that he sent to the teachers, asking what was going on, because he wasn't aware they were going to do it. One of the teacher's evaluators was not even aware of this, and that teacher was receiving skilled on her evaluations up until she received this letter. The real thing here is, these folks had to go home to their families, and they had to explain to them that they will not have a job next year, they may not have health insurance, and they don't know why. All right? To make it even more cruel, in my opinion, they are being forced to continue the evaluation procedure, which is not being followed, to determine their nonrenewal. And to give these folks credit, they have been there nearly every day since then. As I said, they're special ed teachers, they have I E Ps to finish, and for the good of the students, they have not just said, "I give up." I personally would consider this egregious behavior. And you know what? I'm not the only one that thinks that way. Randall Sampson, the chairman of the Academic Distress Committee, also believes this is egregious behavior. I thought I'd see Randall here, because he's attended a few meetings. I'm disappointed not to see him here. I'm not sure he's aware of this situation, but I, the reason I know that he believes this is because he made some comments at the Academic Distress Commission meeting on March 19th. Now, I believe he made these comments in relation to the idea that to justify the need of evaluating the CEO before the Academic Distress Commission gives an up or down to his future here. You can view these comments on YouTube. It is two minutes and 33, or two hours and 33 minutes into the YouTube. He is sitting right next to Dave Hardy, the CEO. And here is what he said. "If we hire a teacher and arbitrarily gave that teacher up or down right now at the end of the school year, and the teacher has to go home and speak to their family about that situation, that would be egregious. There is no way possible we can evaluate a teacher without a criteria and come in on a whim and create an evaluation system." That is exactly what occurred to these three teachers. Now, I just wanted to make sure, I'm the science teacher, and I'm not an English teacher, so I checked on the definition of egregious from Merriam-Webster. And it says, "The term egregious refers to actions or behaviors that are staggeringly bad or obviously wrong beyond any reasonable degree. The term is commonly used to describe conduct of a person." I would submit to you that the CEO is guilty of egregious activities. Now, I don't know about you, I'm a big believer in the golden rule, you know, the Sermon on the Mount? Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And I submit as evidence, right here, that Dave Hardy is telling us how he believes he can be treated, just like he is treating others. He doesn't need an evaluation system, he's a probationary employee here in Lorraine, just like those teachers. And I think there are a lot of reasons available. Additionally, I think he has now given the Academic Distress Commission an example of egregious behavior, and if we want to keep a CEO here that is, that is, performs egregious behaviors, the A D C now has that as evidence, too. I, I don't believe he should be treated any better than he treats any other person. These folks, these teachers, are no less humans than he is. They have no fewer family members than he has. So, I, like I said, I'm disappointed Randall's not here, maybe he'll watch this video, but I challenge Randall Sampson and the Academic Distress Committee to do the right thing and end the CEO's egregious behavior before more families are harmed. Thank you.
Jay, I got a question.
Yep.
Were all the employees probationary that got the nonrenewal?
Yes, right. They're two years or less.
Okay, then, I'm assuming that, that they went through, you know, their, their processes, did they get due process on everything, or?
I've passed out the due process, the new one.
The new one?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, that-
I didn't read this yet.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot there, but that's what they get to go through, and that doesn't provide them any relief, it simply says, "You get to, you get to talk to people about it." We've looked at that, we have concerns, by the way. Our, our organization and our lawyers are looking at that policy. And if you note in this policy, it is not just limited to these probationary employees, this is for any limited contract teacher in the district. State law says they have to be notified by June 1st if the district is intending to nonrenew them. Yes.
How many teachers did you say?
There were several, I don't like to identify the number, only because I have to keep them, you know, anonymous, in other words.
Could we say more than five?
No, I, I'll be honest, it's less than five.
Less than five?
But, in my opinion, one of them is more than enough.
Absolutely. Okay.
So, Otes doesn't apply here?
Nope.
How long have we had this policy?
April 10th, 2019. A little less than three weeks ago. You don't have it, the CEO has it. I mean, it supersedes your ability to create policy.
Yes, as we know.
Hey, Jay, did you say that, number one, I heard you say to your special ed teachers, but did you also say the special ed director was unaware?
That is the supervisor, I should say. The most direct supervisor, I just saw the text the teacher showed me, and said, "Look," you know, he didn't even know this was occurring.
Isn't he the one that should be evaluating these teachers, or have some kind of input in whether they should be brought back or not?
I would think.
It's usually the normal process, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
And I'm just gonna pitch a question to our A D C members who are here. Were you guys aware that any of these policies were being changed?
I was informed there was a couple nonrenewals. I didn't know the extent or the details of the situation. I am shocked to hear that the teacher received a skilled on her evaluation and also received this nonrenewal, that doesn't make much sense. So, definitely a concern to be looked into.
Yeah, I agree, and there were other policy changes that have been made since the fall that have been made by the CEO that did not go through us, or obviously, you guys, as well.
So, House Bill 70 doesn't give you guys the authority to approve those policies? You just, we can change policy, and that's all that?
Apparently, yes.
Interesting.
That it?
Thanks, folks.
Appreciate it. Any other from the public, please?
Bambi Dillon. Okay, I have so many emotions, it keeps me up at night with things going in my head, because I've volunteered so much here for Lorraine City Schools, and for levy committees, and everything else. And I understand, because our schools are in such shambles, I can understand why the school board will not put a levy on if they get no answers. And, so, this is my question to you. Since the state created this mess, and since you, the school board, will not put a school levy on, are we gonna ask the state Board of Education to give us that 3-point-some-million dollars that we're not gonna get because of the mess they created?
Is that it?
I'd like to know that. Yes, I want to know. I want you to go and ask them for the money that we will not get, because we will not be putting on a school levy because of their mess. And because of their mess now, it's gonna make a deficit for Josh to deal with, and so that is going to affect the children. Am I not correct?
So, and the most honest answer to that question is, there is a lot of damage that House Bill 70 has caused our district.
I know that.
And I think there will be a time that we will have to stop and consider what we do moving forward to the damage that's been done by the state to our district.
Okay.
And if we're able to make any type, we will have to then talk to Legal, because I'm sure she's giving me the sharp eye from this side there. But at that point, we will reevaluate and see if there's anything within our-
Okay, but see, Josh only has till July to apply, correct? Do you have to, to put a levy on in November?
The absolute deadline is the beginning of August.
August.
And we've gotta have two meetings in order to pass two-
Right. And then, the end of the money will be this year, right?
At the latest, yeah, depending on how close. Well, I need space between those two meetings in order to get, the first one has given me the ability to have the auditor's office do their, their calculation, and then it gives me the ability then to take it back, have them certify that they have, you guys have passed it, and then the next piece, or next resolution, gives me the ability then to submit it to the Board of Elections.
Okay.
So, it probably, comfortably, I would want at least a week in between those meetings, so, I mean, worst-case scenario, you're probably talking 10 days at an absolute minimum, just to give the county auditor's office enough time to certify.
Okay, now, the current levy we have, the money will end at the end of this year?
January 1st.
Or do you get, or is it behind?
January 1st is gone.
Okay.
This is the last year of collection.
For the levy? And you were, if we were to put it on, what were you gonna ask for? What do you think they would ask for? 3-point-something?
It's just the renewal, yeah.
Which is, what, 3.1 million?
3.1 million.
Okay. Well, I sure hope that you guys ask the state where we're supposed to get the money at, since they created this mess. You know, they can't run the government, I don't know why they think they can run a school system. And then, also, it makes me upset when I go to these meetings. A few times, Mr. Hardy asked me to come to these meetings, and he meets with senior, junior and senior students. And one day, it was very upsetting for me, because they were, I'm not sure where they were at, they were at another location, another school system, and somebody said to them, "Oh, where are you from?" Lorraine City Schools. "Oh, well, that's too bad." You know, the children there, they felt really bad, because of all this negative stuff in the paper. It makes them feel like they're not smart, you know, that they're, because it's, "We're failing system, this and that." You can't blame the teachers for a failing system. They've gone to school, they've got their college degree, they are not allowed to teach, like the teachers in years ago taught all of us. They have to teach the kids how to pass tests, and nothing about reading, writing, and arithmetic anymore. So, with that being said, I'm a member of the Lorraine Alumni Association, and last week, we had a meeting, because we honor distinguished alumni. Now, last year, our first class, we had 12, and this year, we decided we're gonna try to open it up to 20, because we're so behind, because nobody ever started this. Well, I wanted to, like, hopefully, address these students that feel bad about, you know, this whole situation, and what people are saying about our school system, because in, we have a gentleman that is, well, I'm sorry, a woman, her name is, last name is Bartik, she's a VP of Mission Integration at Mercy Hospital. We have Melissa Driscoll, she's a singer and actress. We have Tim and Terry Kudrowski, who's an entrepreneur, have their own successful bakery department. There was a Monica Link, she's Chief Operating Officer of McGruder Hospital, Director of Pharmacy at McGruder Hospital. We have Jason Molina, he's a musician, and singer, and a songwriter. We have Mr. Pecan, who served in the Marines and has retired from Lorraine City Schools and was a very respected and great educator here for our schools. We have, let me see, Dr. Costin, who's a cataract surgeon, very successful. We have Marie DeLuciano, who has, they started their own business, and it's global wide, and is very successful. We also have Craig Fulton, who was our mayor, and now he's Executive Vice President at Community College, I believe. We also have a gentleman that was a graduate of Yale and University of Michigan. He was an Executive Vice President of United Health Group and Corporate Chief Information Officer. We have a graduate that is now Executive Director of the Cleveland Metropolitan Parks Zoo. We have a gentleman that was CEO and President of BP America. We also have a gentleman that was, had a Master's of Science in Strategic Studies for the U.S. Army for a 25-year career, and he was located in Italy and oversaw the families and the government civilians there, and he served in Iraq. Now, these kids here need to realize that they can be just as successful as these people, and I'm tired of the negative publicity for our children. We need to have that stopped. We have inside problems because of the organizational chart that the governor set up for a school system. That's ridiculous, because corporate businesses don't even have that type of setup, where a CEO has all the prob, all the authority. And I'm not just saying, Mr. Hardy, anybody, he could leave and somebody else could come back, who do you, do you think they might be the same kind of person? Because they have that kind of power. And until you guys do get the HB 70 done, you have to change the organizational chart, where it's a CEO and directors, and they all have an input, and not one person has authority. So, maybe I'll sleep tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, Barbie Washington, Riverside Drive. I don't know if you can answer a question, but Mr. Pickering addressed the special needs teachers. I was just wondering, are any of them the new TFA teachers, perhaps the one that doesn't even know, or didn't know what an I E P was, when they began this year?
Is Mr. Pickering still here? He could probably answer that better.
I can say no, only because I know the location of the Teach for America teacher was not in that building, so, no, Teach for America teacher's still here.
Then, my, my question is, myself, as Barbie Washington Titan underscore mom underscore on Twitter, and then It Takes a Village on Twitter, was blocked by Randall Sampson, and as the Lorraine A D C. My question to the two A D C members here, I would like to know, is that your account? And it's under my impression that it is illegal for a public official to block.
It is not our account. We were, I don't know if you want me to speak for-
No, that's, that's fine. Steve and I talked, and neither one of us had anything to do with that Twitter account. In fact, we sent an email out, he sent the first email, and I was as concerned as he was, and we know that two other commissioners said that they did not know anything about the Twitter account, and we have not heard back from Mr. Sampson.
Yeah, it was not put together by us.
Is there, it's, it's a Lorraine A D C account, and it is using the logo that is owned by Lorraine City Schools to operate?
I also reported this to Twitter directly, as it not being my account, and it's representing a person or a group that I belong to.
And my thing was that we have a difficult time as A D C to decide when we're gonna meet, the direction of the district. I don't personally want an account that represents the A D C, because that doesn't represent necessarily what I feel. So, I've looked at some of the tweets, I don't follow the A D C account, but I've checked it, and there's certain things that have been listed on there that I personally would not have posted. They're not derogatory, or horrible, or anything, but they're just not my personal philosophy in terms of some verbiage, and there are some other specific tweets of things. So, I just don't like the fact that it implies, as your question implies, that it represents myself, it represents Diane, and-
Our commission as a whole.
And then, we were never consulted on whether or not that was going to be done. We never said no, yes, or even had a discussion about it.
Especially with it being against the law, and then there could be consequences. There was a senator that was, that just paid $20,000 for blocking a citizen. Meeting, is there a meeting date set? Has an evaluation been done?
I don't know if we're able to say publicly when the meeting is, there's been a date, I believe, in June, that has been-
A tentative June 5th date is the last time that we've finalized, so it has not been made public yet, as of, now, I should say, but yes, June 5th is the date.
Okay, and no evaluation at this time? Thanks.
Barbie, just to your point, I'm definitely not gonna put Ms. Santiago on a, you know, spot, but I do believe you're accurate in your evaluation of a public official, if they are utilizing a social media account for public business, then I do not believe it is legal for them to block a constituent from getting access to that individual. But that might be something you want to maybe get a legal opinion about?
Anything further from the public? Nothing further? Okay, need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th and the April 13th meeting.
Support.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
You have anything today under old business?
I do. I had, I had asked Josh, I don't know if you, if you're ready for that, but I had asked him to, to go back and look at the, the numbers on the buildings, and, and divide it by elementary, junior high, and high school, because I'm, I'm still thinking that, that we have quite a few people leaving the district. And I'm watching to see if it's, if it's dropped. Do you have any information on?
I don't yet. I did send it over to Emis, who just so happens to be, came from Power School, it's Barb Bone. She is pulling the numbers, and I asked her, maybe about a half an hour before the meeting, where do we stand on that? She hadn't pulled it, she's trying to make sure Power School aligns with Emis.
I had asked for the dates from, and it, I asked for from June 1st until present, and I could have asked for probably August, when school started, until, until now, but I figure people probably leave.
There's some big dates in the summer.
In all fairness, I asked how much we gained also, if we gained, if we gained some, I just wanted to, I wanted to see those numbers, because I just have, I still have that feeling that, that we've got a lot more leaving than we know about. And that, that too affects every hundred, really.
Agreed.
Every hundred affects, what, $600,000?
Roughly.
I thought I'd heard a number that we lost 19 within a two-week period, or something, just very recently. So, to your point, I do hear there's still, and this is in the final quarter, I do hear that there's a big number still.
Well, then, again, the state should have these numbers by now, so.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand the difficulty in getting that information. Is that it, Bill?
Yeah, so we, hopefully, we'll have it by next board meeting.
I'll get it to you sooner than that. I'll probably have it within the next couple of days, I was a little shocked I didn't have it now. I think you got it to me Friday, and I sent it over to, either Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
I sent it over to her immediately.
It was, it was kind of short notice, you know, so I-
As soon as I have them, I'll get them to you guys.
I was still thinking about, it was on my mind, so I did what was on my mind.
Anyone else have any old business?
Yes.
Ms. Yvonne?
I was very pleased, and I wish to thank Mr. Ballard and Mr. Demakia for that in-service workshop that we had on Saturday. It was phenomenal. I wish all of us, as the board, all, just, the, all the people that come to the monthly meeting with the superintendent, I wish they had been there, because it was very informative, it was excellent, it was well-done, and I'd just like to thank them for doing such an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a few things that I want to talk in old business, but, you know, to your point, Ms. Dillon, you know, I'm going to point out a couple of things that are negative, but- but, uh, you know, House Bill 70 has brought much of this negativity, and the people that it's brought to this district. Unfortunately, you know, Lorraine City Schools has always dealt with a negative perception because we are the largest school district in the county. We are an urban school district, and, you know, with school districts on the outside of here, they, they have no idea what goes on in our classroom. They have no idea the great programs that happen and the great students that we graduate that go on to do great things, and that was just a small list. I mean, there are people still in this community that are grown adults, and that list is enormous of how many great graduates have gone on to do fantastic things, and we're going to continue to graduate those kids. And all those things have always, we've always had great things in the school district. You know, the problem is the state evaluation is a flawed evaluation of how they evaluate public education through some standardized test, and that is an issue in itself. The other issue is the funding of public education. That's a major issue. So, those things, you can ask any common citizen in this community, what does a failing school district mean exactly? And many people don't even understand what that means. They understand it because they read it in newspapers, they see it. The state of Ohio says you're a failing school district because your kids couldn't pass a standardized test. Our kids couldn't pass a standardized test because we've done nothing to help them with the barriers they face before they come to our doorstep to take that test. So, they're not interested in taking that test, not to mention the many students that we have that are English second language learners that speak Spanish. They have to take that same standardized test. You know, I mean, it goes on and on and on. But, you know, speaking of Spanish-speaking students, I don't know if you guys saw the two very unfortunate news reports that were on Fox 8 News this past week, but apparently there was a situation in one of our middle schools where a special needs kid, a paraplegic, had fallen out of his wheelchair, and the, what ensued after that was, number one, alarming, and it just turned my stomach from what I heard had happened, from the people that were in that classroom, the devastation to those other students in that classroom about how that child was mistreated. And then what really bothered me to find out that the school district did absolutely nothing. They did not investigate that situation until Melissa Reed from Fox 8 started pounding on their doors, asking questions about the situation. Then they decided to do something about it, and that is unacceptable. And these are the things that, when you have unqualified incompetent people in positions to make decisions, these are the things that happen. And what is even more alarming is that administration in that building directed that teacher not to inform that family of exactly what that aide had done in that situation, intentionally deceived that family so they wouldn't know. Again, hiding the reality that something should have been done with that employee of this school district, and they neglected to do their job, and they put another child's safety at risk. Unacceptable, and we've been seeing it for the last year and a half. At some point in time, somebody has to do something. So, if you didn't get a chance to see that, you might want to look it up. I mean, it was extremely disturbing to see that. And speaking of state standardized tests, and you guys can help me out more than, the state standardized test, in my opinion, it might be the most important piece of testing that any of our students have or any student in the state of Iowa has. And in my experience with building administrators, I'm, I'm a little alarmed that during the state testing week here at Lorraine High School, our executive director took a five-day vacation and wasn't even around during state standardized tests. Is this not the most important assessment that our students have to take? And isn't he the most important individual in a building to make sure that this testing goes smoothly, to make sure everything is the way it should be, classrooms are prepared, students are there? I, I just, when I heard that, I was alarmed that, I, I don't think any school district would allow their building principal to leave during state testing. And again, I will defer to you because I'm not-
I can say it's the most critical week of the year, and it's all hands on deck.
Yeah.
Everybody's involved to make sure that you get through testing smoothly, and it's, it's quite an enormous task to get through it.
I, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, that would be my advice to not take a time off.
Apparently, it wasn't important to that individual. That's the negative I have. I really want to talk about the positive. I had a great opportunity, and I want to thank Joe Bach, because he had set this up with WEOL and Andy and Matt over there, and just the other day, you know, I sat in Mark's seat for a second and had an opportunity to discuss some of the, the great things that are going on. And again, I, I have to reiterate that these great things in this school district have been going on for years. You know, our robotics program, again, just to talk about them, and I know they came here and they, and they come, you know, the work that is put into that program, that those instructors put in at Longfellow is certainly unbelievable. And, you know, again, our Longfellow Robotics Team was a world qualifier, you know, and I have to give a lot of credit to Denise Farney and Ryan Dickinson and Deb Hanson that run that program. They do a phenomenal job. You know, the other thing that I saw in one of the newspapers was the American Sign Language class and, and teacher Meredith Maddie Percival. It's in third year of his program, and I was floored when I found out that this year more than 160 students in ninth through 12th grade wanted to take this class, and on any given time, there are at least 70 kids on a waiting list to take this sign language class. And what a fantastic opportunity, and, and, you know, if you see some of the comments from some of those students that take it, and I was impressed, I, I got an opportunity to watch them do it at a couple basketball games. Wow, I mean, they, they have learned how to do lessons, not just vocabulary, but the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, and even the Bill of Rights. They have learned to sign movies and shows. I mean, just absolutely unbelievable, because, you know, a lot of times we focus on Spanish and French and, you know, some of these main languages that we always teach, and, you know, we forget about classes like this, so I gotta give a lot of credit to Ms. Percival and, and that class and the great thing that they have done. Also, they had their second annual senior day service. They had about estimated 400 Lorraine High seniors that participated in this year. They volunteered at more than 25 sites in Lorraine and Elyria. They helped organizations out like El Central, Goodwill, Head Start, Friendship Animal Protective League, Salvation Army, Lorraine County Community Action Agency. So, you know, having 400 students come out of, you know, Lorraine to go out and help the community and help these organizations and volunteer their time, and I know they had a great experience doing that. The other thing, and bear with me, because, you know, sometimes we don't get an opportunity to do this, but, you know, I was amazed at, number one, I'm always amazed listening to them, but the Lorraine High Marching Band, they are a fantastic band that does a brilliant job under that leadership, and, you know, Mr. Timothy Civic has done a fantastic job over the years. They have made several major appearances that are worth noting. They appeared at the Magnificent Mile Lights Parade in Chicago, Illinois, America's Thanksgiving Parade in Detroit, Michigan, the Puerto Rican People's Day Parade in Chicago, Illinois, National Cherry Blossom Festival Parade in Washington, D.C., and they will also be performing in the Citrus Bowl Parade in Orlando, Florida. So, you gotta be pretty dang good to be able to make all those appearances and be invited to those things. I mean, you just don't show up, you know, you know, there are invitations to those things. You know, and the last thing is, you know, we always talk about, you know, these programs that happen throughout the district, but, you know, notably, it's always a sports that, you know, gets all the, you know, accolades and everybody talks about because, you know, most people like sports. This past basketball season, you know, obviously, we, we experienced some great success with our boys' basketball program. They went 23 and 2, and they again won the Lake Erie League by going 12-0 in the conference. Isn't this the fourth time in five years to do that, which is extremely challenging to do? And of course, Devon Grant won Lorraine County Mr. Basketball, which is spectacular, and he's committed to Miami University. But also, I want to talk about the girls' basketball, and if he could, Coach Angel Sanchez is here. Could you stand up? And I just give him a round of applause. The seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball team had unbelievable season. The seventh grade went 13 and 3, and the eighth grade went 17 and 0 under the leadership of, of Coach Sanchez and others. They both won the Lake Erie League championships, and anybody that's ever coached, you know, coaching is a thankless job, and it's very time-consuming and difficult to do, so I commend Coach Sanchez and the rest of the staff for your fantastic season. Congratulations to you and all the girls. Great job.
That's it, man. That's plenty.
That's all I got.
I got another one.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to say that we may not have the power to create policy, but we can commend all the students and the teachers and give them the flowers that they need right now. I have one more thing to say. As the House Bill 70, and we know we're trying to do something about that, if you had been there Saturday, you could have heard the state senators, the congressmen, all types of legislatures, they were talking about how that they could return the power back to the Board of Education. But there's so many steps, and there's so many blocks to do that, that when we were asking the question, it might take until the end of 2019 or until maybe the spring of 2020. Am I right about that? If anybody knows any difference, but that was sort of the information that I got. Was that right?
Well, there's quite a few. Really, it is dependent upon, you know, our elected legislators in Columbus, and there are a couple of different routes that they could possibly take. One, one is putting some kind of an amendment or repeal or some kind of language in the budget itself with an emergency attachment, which would make it, as soon as the governor signed it, that change would happen immediately. But again, you know, they're actually taking the appropriate route with this bill, unlike they did with House Bill 70, and, well, there's three bills right now currently in legislation, and, and they're going through the readings and the testimony for those bills, and it is extremely challenging, so, you know, it's on their backs, but hopefully, many of those legislators do the right thing. I know that Lorraine has been heard in Columbus. You know, I know Mark has been in a lot of those conversations, as well as Mayor Rittner and some of the other folks from around this local leadership, so we're certainly pushing, but it is on the legislators, and it could happen a couple of different ways. I mean, there is really no definitive timeline. It could happen tomorrow, it could happen next year. We don't know, but again, that is on, in legislation, and they're pushing it, and they've just got to get the right votes, and, you know, Mr. Ballard-
I didn't want to say the obvious at that meeting, and the obvious was that the state superintendent can remove us.
Correct.
Okay, so no, no one talked about that, but-
But he's not going to do the right thing. He's proven up to this point that he's not going to do what we consider the right thing.
But what I was trying to get at, the point, while they were really trying to get there, and there's so many complicated steps, isn't his contract finished by June the 11th, and he gets a renewal?
That's up to the commission.
From the state?
That's up to the commission, actually.
They've got to agree on a meeting date first.
That's what I'm saying. So, while we're talking about this and trying to do something, he's already in again, and if he is the intelligent man that we think he is, if he can do all of this and get us all upset, and our teachers, as they say, so frightened, and the whole city in some type of quandary, then if I were him, I'm just talking from the top of my head, then I would see for a multiple contract. I would not ask for a one-year contract from the state. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, but that completely would not be our problem. That would be the state's problem. They get to write that check.
But, but, but I, this is what I'm saying. As all that change is happening, and they're trying to give us our power back, that can occur.
With, with the damage he's done in this district, if he wanted to do the right thing, he wouldn't even ask for a one-year contract. He'd just move on his way.
Now, I'm talking about reality, though.
That is reality.
And my, and my point is, I think the legislators have, first of all, the state superintendent has agreed that House Bill 70 is not working properly, and that it's been a disaster, basically. He says it can't work in a community. The legislators have realized what they've done wrong, and they know that they now have to fix this. So, at this point, we've just got to let the process take care of itself, but things are turning around, and they are trying to fix and right their wrongs.
Okay, now, if we get another, it wouldn't be a CEO, it would be a superintendent, are we going to give him the same measurement that we gave this CEO and tell him within two to three years if he has not made the change?
I think we're going to have our skis at this point. I, I think we have to, as a community, come up with a plan on how do we succeed after House Bill 70. Everything wasn't done right prior to us going in, and we now have to fix that as a collective on how we fix our district going forward, and I don't think that has been created yet.
No.
But that's something that we, as Lorraine citizens-
But it's something to think about.
100%. And we have to do it collectively as a community, with some of the ADC members, all of the ADC members, with our legal officials downtown Lorraine, with the businesses of Lorraine, and with the parents, who are the most important with their children. So, we have to come up with that program moving forward. Whether there's a CEO or not, that conversation needs to be had.
Yes.
So, it's a community effort. That's Mark's opinion. Is that it?
All right.
Do we have any recommendations from the treasurer?
I have none.
Do you have any recommendations from the CEO?
I have none.
Your job's been pretty easy this week, huh? Okay, we have a second hearing of the public.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Lilly. I'm president of OC 120, and I represent 150 people that work in this school district, and the majority of them live in this community. And Tony, you really made me angry with your blaming a personal attendant for something. I'd like to know where you got your information, because that personal attendant did nothing wrong. He followed procedure. Everything was completely done. The parent knew that afternoon what happened. Yes.
No.
Absolutely, yes. Now, they're going back because there's been another person talking to them. It's public comments without all the information that makes Lorraine City Schools look bad, and that's, that's wrong. We need to get it all. There is a procedure going. There will be an investigation. I'm not supporting the administration, but I support, I support the, the process to find out the truth. Thank you.
Mrs. Lilly, did you, did you see the video?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Did you see the video?
I did. I did see that, and I did hear, and I do know why that child was laying on the floor, but that's waiting for the other people to get. This was in a special needs classroom. Those kids were very upset, and they're quoting a seventh-grade special needs per child who is very upset that sees something happening. When everybody's crowding around, you're supposed to clear stuff back to make sure that child is not hurt before you try to move them, and that's what is happening. So, let's just let everything, this person did nothing wrong.
Except for yelling at a special needs kid as he's laying on the ground.
Yeah, he had, his comments weren't, I mean, they weren't, what I would say was, would be a, he didn't look like he was helping the situation, is what I'm saying. I mean, but I'm, I'm okay with-
He was in shock. He was pretty much in shock because what was happening is something that happened every single school day this year.
But I mean, I'm okay with letting, you know, due process.
Process, yes.
Yeah.
But to publicly say something before that happens just make, it made me very angry. Yes.
It took a week for the school district to do anything about it.
Yeah, this-
A week.
Well, if I can't, I think your point was, it's fair to criticize that maybe it wasn't handled correctly in administration, but what we're doing, and we all do it, is if we spread all this and talk about it and say, oh, look what happened, and we got a, well, we're making this exactly what Bambi talked about, and publicly saying, you know, look what goes on in Lorraine City Schools. Tony, criticizing a little bit is, this ain't a forum to do that either, because it just builds on that. It makes it sound like we got people in the schools when if you investigated the facts, there's another side to every story. In this case, that person thought they were doing the right thing. They weren't out to harm. These are good people that worked there. So I guess her point was, she's trying to defend, after talking to the person interviewed and getting all the facts, it was an unfortunate situation, but when you put it out in the media and you have your cell phones in the classroom and they start talking about it and makes it look bad, and we just don't want you to make it look bad too. Lorraine City Schools people are good people, they work hard, and there's very few of them that are going to intentionally do something wrong with children. So I guess that was her only point.
And I'll say, it was brought to my attention via the news, and then I did see-
It looks bad. It really does.
Yeah, and then I did see the parents that were interviewed on the second day, and I did make a statement, I am interested in the investigation happens swiftly so we can get to the bottom of whatever's going on.
Sure.
And I think that is a fair due process.
But if you look into that, you'll find there's complications into that too.
And I don't want any preconceives before it happened, but I think the process should take its course. And thank you for that. I appreciate it from both of you.
Courtney Nazaria, West 11th Street. I have a couple of things. To go back to that, to say that he did it every day, right in the incident report, said it was the first time Jacob attempted to stand. She said that he was in shock because it had happened every day. It says right here, it's the first time that he did that.
He goes from the wheelchair to the table. He has never unbuckled himself before.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, though, but how you made it sound was that he did that every day and then-
If you would, please, Ms. Nazaria, if you would, talk to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
If there's a question that you may have for us, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
And the other thing is that he is now starting to unbuck-
Let's refocus the room, please.
Okay.
Your question?
Yeah, two things. When you went back to Mr. Garvey being able to take vacation, I actually, since we were not able to ask questions at the town hall meeting to Mr. Hardy, I asked Mr. Hawks, and he assured me that he would get back to me the next day with an answer as to why Mr. Garvey was able to take vacation that week. He would speak Mr. Hardy, he told me it was a very valid question. I have since emailed him twice, and I still have not got a response back from Mr. Hawks as to why he was able to take that week. And then also, the district also has not done to, they want the parents to be involved in their kids' education. They've not put out the testing schedules for days to make sure that the kids have their computers. I mean, I asked my daughter when she has it so that makes sure that her computer is charged and ready, since they have to use the computer that they have. We've never got anything brought home from General Johnny, and I believe the high school does not have things sent home current to say, this class is taking this test today. So that just adds on to them, the testing is not as an important part of the year to them, or if it was an important part of the year, they would get that type of information out.
As I was sitting back there, I got to thinking a little bit, and based on the levy, the renewal levy coming up, I have some concerns. And as Josh pointed out, the timeline, there's a big urgency here. You know, we're talking about $3.1 million. We can't wait until August 1st to make this decision. And, you know, I want to commend you folks, by the way, for standing tough last year because a lot of people called for you to put a levy on blind because they felt that it's money, you better get it for the kids, there's no other thing. And I think, as I was concerned, I think you guys were concerned, the CEO never came to a meeting, never talked to you folks. I mean, me personally, I would have been here the first meeting, said, I'm here, we got to work together. He didn't choose to do that. I completely understand why you were cautious about putting that levy on, and I commend you for not putting it on, all right? But by not putting it on, you might have provided a positive note for this district, and you may hold a little more power than you think. You know, as I thought about this, you're taking all the brunt of putting a levy on. I think it's time you put that on the shoulders of the people that make a decision here. I don't believe there will be a chance of this passing if Dave Hardy is still here. After talking to the community, I mean, even if you put it on, there's no chance anymore. All right? So I might ask you to consider making a resolution that says that you'll be willing to put that levy on. I got to thinking about this, by the way, because part of the letter to the teachers gave them a deadline to resign if they don't want any of this action to follow them, for those non-renewed teachers. It might not be a bad idea to make a resolution, put in a deadline of Dave Hardy either resigning, being removed by the Academic Distress Commission, or possibly Paolo DiMario, and taking the pressure off you folks. It's their decision. And so for your consideration, you know, and you have to consider the deadlines. I just realized that we're only two months out. And if you're going to do something like that, there has to be deadlines in pieces. You know, and I don't really believe that Dave Hardy is a $3.1 million man, because that's what you're going to be missing. And that's going to go on for a five-year levy?
It's a renewal.
Renewal, and it would be five years.
Seven years.
Seven years, so $20 million, because, you know, putting a new levy on is much more difficult than getting a renewal passed. So I just, for your consideration, as I was sitting there realizing the timeline, a lot of people in Columbus believe, oh, we can wait and wait and wait, and we don't have the time. Yep, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any more from the public? Have anything from any of our distress commissioners, you guys? You all clear?
I think we've said enough.
We're looking forward to attending the academic banquet, the CV.
Yes, we are all going to that. Yes. We do not have an executive session. Announcement, when is our next board meeting?
May 14.
May 14. Also, there's going to be a group of us going down to talk to the State Board of Education and all of their board members on the 14th of this month. It'll be after lunch, so it'll be around 1:00. And the State Board really don't know what's going on here. A lot of them are still saying, oh, we hear everything is fine in Lorraine, which is, they got to be living under a rock to think that everything is fine in Lorraine. But we're taking that opportunity to, A, express what is really going on here, and B, to talk about what our plan can be coming out of the academic distress, no matter who's at the helm. So I recommend anybody who's willing to come, we need all the voices from all three of these communities that have been taken over by this House Bill 70, to really express how they feel about the politics of House Bill 70, without all the personalities, but just what it has done to our communities as a whole. Did you have something additional? Same thing, but it's, yes. We're going to try, buddy. We're going to be moving fast.
Let me know if we got to switch it.
Yes, that's a consideration.
Just to switch it.
Just to switch it now. Can we go out to the next Tuesday, then?
Sure. Is that graduation day?
Yeah.
Yes.
The 21st. These Tuesdays are not working out.
Explain that to me again, that you're going to try to get down there, May 14, in the morning, by 1:00, and still make a board meeting here?
I think that's what we're discussing now.
Oh, that's what you're doing now? All right, now.
Yes, so we will come up with the best dates that are possible, and then we will make that publicly known on the date we're going to reschedule because it's important, and the state superintendent has stated that he's excited to hear what our plan could be coming out. Therefore, I think it's important that we go and at least indulge his excitement. How about that?
I'd like to add that the state superintendent is a little leery because his job is getting a little shaky also.
Wow. Yeah, okay. Yes, another question from the floor, yes.
Are we not able to get a bus? A bus load of people can go?
I think that would be great. I'm not the guy to lead that, but we need as many. I know East Cleveland and Youngstown are trying to get there as well, but the more people we can take from Lorraine just to-
Why don't you start advertising it, I'll get the pricing, we're going to take care of it. We'll have a bus.
So everybody who's watching, we'll have a bus. See Bambi, she's going to get it all orchestrated, and we're going down to, and while we're there, we'll see some of our other legislators. We'll try to make sure we can make a whole day of it. That be good? Need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support. Roll call?
Mr. Damakia?
Yep.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools, TV20 WLCS.